Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Plymouth, Massachusetts, America's hometown, and it's a great place to live. Tonight, we have four cases and a continued case. And ladies and gentlemen, the continued case is Pulte. And none of us are really, really happy about that, but the information, it just didn't get to us in time, so we can't really do anything about. They have asked us for the extension, and we have to allow that. So what's going to happen tonight? And I believe me, this board is, does not like to do this, to continue a case without any testimony whatsoever, because this whole audience has come out primarily to speak on this petition, and you have every right to speak on this petition, and we want to hear every person in this room on this petition. But we can't really have any comment this evening, because there is no testimony, and we're right back to where we started the first night that we opened this case. So pardon me? Excuse me. Go ahead, Peter. Oh, and we're also having quite a bit of computer problems. Mine won't work. We're, we're in trouble here, but, but the upshot of the whole thing is, tonight, there will be no testimony on the Pulte case, because we are going to continue it, and we're going to continue it to November the 10th at 6:00 PM. And I, and I'm going to strongly reiterate to those folks that, that this can't keep happening, and especially this time of year. People are starting to, the, the weather is changing, it's not going to be as nice. People are gearing up for the holiday season and everything. It's time to put this to bed. So bear with us, and I, I will tell you that we will be back here on November the 10th at 6:00 PM for this case. Now, I await a motion from the board.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we continue the case, Pulte 4183 and 4184 until November 10th this year.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
There is a motion by Mr. Connor and a second by Mr. Leary to continue this case to November the 10th at 6:00 PM. I please ask you all to, to be here. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, we can move on to case number 4189, Cranberry Crescent. And it, it's a, I will have the clerk read the advertisement. Yeah, can we wait a minute?
Yeah, wait.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case number 4189, the Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall Town Hall, 26th Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, October 20th, 2025 at 6:00 PM to hear the petition of High Rock Cranberry Crescent, requesting a modification of special permit, case 3764, required per section 203, 3D1, Table 1, to allow additional architectural signs and freestanding signs for an automotive filling station on the property of 2 Commerce Way, shown as parcel 105000001033 of the assessor's map, dated January 1, 2024, in a GC zone. The petitioner or his or her representative or any other person interested in desiring to be heard on this request should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Seated on this case will be Mr. Leary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, and Mr. Connor, and myself. Who will be presenting?
Is the green light on, on?
Oh, does that, is that better?
Much better.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. My name is Peter March, New Hampshire Signs, 66 Goldledge Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire. So I apply for approval for signage at a new build gas station, 2 Commerce Way, Plymouth. It's Zone GC. So the project has been underway for some time, and a portion of the sign package that has been permitted or is within code and has not yet been permitted. The part that we're addressing tonight is the ID sign, the road sign. We're allowed one road sign, and we're requesting a second road sign because of the nature of the property. We attended a planning board review meeting October 8th. The board gave its approval of the entire sign package, and the discussion centered on the second MID or road sign. The board understood the need for two signs, but recommended that the size of the signs be reduced. They felt that the tenant panels in particular on the signs duplicated information already on the building, and suggested that these be reduced or eliminated. So our new design conforms to these requests. Originally, we'd asked, asked for two 70-square-foot signs, 20-foot high, and as a result of the meeting that we had with the planning board, we reduced those to 50 square feet and 16-foot high. So we reduced those signs. Some of the other elements we either are within code or have already been permitted are the canopy signs. I wonder if we could move to the, there's a, so picture of the canopy there somewhere, not that one, is there another?
If you could just speak a little closer into that microphone, it would be helpful.
It's the last, it's the last rendering. There you go, that one. So that, those are the canopy signs. We're allowed 40 square feet per sign. It's a secondary architectural facade. Sorry, we're allowed 40 square feet total. We're asking for two signs of 11 and 1/4 square feet, and those are the mobile signs that you can see right there. So we're asking for two of those. That is well under what we would be allowed. In terms of the building, we have permitted car wash signs, building signs, and some other extraneous signs on the building. So those have been permitted. Permit number Z25555. We're also requesting synergy. The elements are, the architectural elements on the canopy columns, and those have been approved by the ZBA at the sister site to this site, 131 Commerce, so we don't see any controversy with that. So in general, we're looking for relief, for, we're looking for a special permit for master plan signage, which will be subject to this board, and we're asking for a second road sign. Would you mind moving to the, to the, to the road sign? So we're asking for two of those signs. If I come back to the synergy elements, the ones that you approved on 131 Commerce, ExxonMobil has a policy of trying to simplify and rationalize the traffic flow onto a gas station. In general, a gas station suffers from multiple traffic lanes entering and exiting a station in a somewhat haphazard manner, and that causes more danger than it should be. So what you approved at 131 Commerce was these elements here. This is an actual picture of 131 Commerce, and it has a blade.
Can, can you put that up on that?
If we have it, I believe it's.
The original application, huh?
It's not, it's not in that attachment.
Well, because I can't see that.
Can I bring?
And the audience can't see that.
Yep. Have we? Would it be sufficient to show you this piece of paper to pass it around?
Please.
So the purpose of these elements are to rationalize traffic flow onto the site, to consolidate the information, the warning decals in a particular place, and they also have a promotional aspect to them. Again, you approved this at 131 Commerce, and we feel that it's relatively uncontroversial in this, in this particular circumstance. So the elements we're looking for are blades, a koala which hugs the pole, contains some safety information, and then a wedge which has the pump number on it, so that it can be seen from the, from the gas station, from the operator. So those, as I said, they're pretty uncontroversial. They were approved at 131 Commerce some years ago, and I have the minutes for that meeting.
The final one, too?
The real, the real discussion obviously centers around this sign, and particularly two of those signs.
Right.
So we went in front of the planning board, we demonstrated a willingness to bend to what they asked for. They asked us to reduce the size from 70 to 50. We did that. And they asked us to reduce the height, so we went from 20 foot to 16 feet, and this is the result of that, this is the result of that request. The interesting thing to note with it is that it has what are called scrollers for the price. If you remember the old buses that had a, a winding scroll of some sort of canvas, and the number on the bus, on the front of the bus would change with that scroll. This technology is what we're using here. It's not a lit, it's an externally-lit pricer. It can be changed from inside the store, or more importantly, it can be changed using a POS system by the operator. So that part there is not your typical digital sign. The rest of this is externally-eliminated, as is required by code. The reason we're asking for two of these signs is that the site is unusual, and it has two entrances of equal status. One is on Carver and one is on Commerce, okay? So if you were to, if we were to be limited to a single sign, what would happen is, one of those entrances would not be served correctly. So for example, if the only sign was on Carver, you couldn't see this, you couldn't see to enter the Commerce sign if you were approaching, if you were exiting Market Basket and heading towards Carver. You would not be able to see the sign on Carver until you passed the Commerce entrance. I don't know if that makes sense to you. We have a, a diagram here that would, I think the plot plan is actually on that. So would you be able to pull the plot plan up for us? So the, this is the, this is the Carver entrance. That is the Commerce Street entrance. Market Basket is somewhere around here. So if you limited us to just this sign, traffic exiting Market Basket right here would not be able to see that sign, because they'd be looking at it from 90 degrees. So all they'd see is the side of that sign. So this entrance would not be served correctly. Likewise, if you were on Carver, okay, and the only sign we were allowed was on Commerce, the same thing would apply. You'd only be looking at the side of the sign. So we feel that it makes sense to have two signs, and again, we've exceeded to the fact that we're reducing them in size from what they, what we're allowed, but we feel that it makes sense to have two signs, and that, that essentially is the rationale behind our argument. In terms of requirements for the special permit, the proposed use is, is consistent with the purpose and intent of the district in which the subject land is located, and with the comprehensive plan. The core goals include economic development, infrastructure maintenance, improvements in safety, and this proposal is consistent with those goals, and it promotes economic development, puts a gas station where one is needed, it creates infrastructure, and it promotes safety through the use of two signs rather than just one side. It treats those roads as equivalent roads. Adequate facilities will be provided, there's adequate power, and there's adequate space for this proposal. No hazard to pedestrians or vehicles will be created. In fact, we feel that our proposal will improve traffic safety by adding clear, unambiguous signage. No nuisance or adverse effect on the neighborhood. The proposal has a positive effect on the neighborhood by added, by adding needed infrastructure and services. The sign package we're requesting relates to the architectural features of the site as a whole, and is in proportion to them, and they're clear and appropriate to this enterprise. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I was, when I looked at yours, what we have on the packet is the, pylon signs had the car wash on it. That's what you took off, because that's what's going to be one of my points.
Yeah.
I wanted to see that taken off, because you drive past the car wash, you see both of them.
That was exactly the point that the planning board raised, and we removed that. So yes, the, the.
Yeah, it makes it a little shorter.
Yeah. So we took the tenant panels off. The only tenant panel, or the only signs that we have would be Mobil and Hafnes, Hafnes being the operator of the, of the gas station, then you have the two prices.
Yeah, now, another question I just have, and, you know, this is more of a question on, so I looked at your other plan, I think it's up here, and it shows, you know, your, the signs for the top of the awnings, if you will, whatever, the canopies.
Yeah.
But both of them are on this end of the building. Why couldn't you put one of those on, see the one on the end, on the other end? You see what I'm saying? So, yeah, you got, that one you would need, because that's for Carver Road, but the one on the side almost serves no purpose. How about if you put that on the other side?
For the record, my name is Fred Peenall, New Hampshire Signs, 66 Goldledge Ave. We actually addressed that, it never made it to that plan. We plan on putting one facing Carver, just as it is, and then the other one would face Market Basket on the adjacent corner to the left. So that was taken into account. It's just never made it to the site plans.
Okay, because I was looking at that, and to me, it just didn't even make sense why you would have that.
Yeah, that was adjusted, it just never made it.
Okay. And so the other side, so you're 30 inches lower on, on the pylons anyways?
Yeah.
Or did you say it was more 50? And did I?
We reduced the square footage to 50 square feet from 75 as a combined sign.
Okay. All right.
Both pylons the same?
Go ahead.
Both pylons of the same height?
Yes, sir.
Not in favor of two pylons?
Yes.
I'll tell you that.
I want to ask about the Jack's Kitchen sign. That's an illuminated, internally illuminated sign, unless it's been removed.
No, it is not an internally illuminated. We're still struggling on how to light that, but it will be externally or halo lit. We just, the, the way it shows on the logo, here, just to everybody. It's a block sign, technically, so if we're going to put a light bar down lighting on it, that's probably going to be ended up, to what we're going to end up doing.
Okay, so it will not be an internally illuminated sign?
No, sir.
Okay, we should make sure that's one of the conditions. Okay, thank you.
Just reading the planning board conditions, number five says, "The size of the mid-pylon side should be reduced to eliminate visual clutter and minimize potential confusion caused by excessive concentration of signage in the area, in the vicinity." So I don't really follow that recommendation by the planning board. It just says, it should be reduced. We should give them more direction on how much it should be reduced.
They did reduce it. They took out like the car wash. They reduced it by 30, 30 inches down.
Yeah, we took the height of the sign down from 20 to 16 feet, and we went from a 70-square-foot sign to a 50-square-foot sign.
All right, so we want to make sure that that decision says that, unlike the planning board's decision.
The planning board didn't specifically give us guidelines. We just figured this was a appropriate response.
So how much did you do it, sorry?
I'm sorry, we reduced the height of the sign from 20 feet to 16 feet, and the overall size of the sign from 70 square feet to 50 square feet.
Mr. Silver, do you have anything that you would like to ask at this point? Okay, have you anything else you would like to add to this right at the moment?
No, sir.
Seeing that, I'm going to open this to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak about this petition? Are you sure? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Have you anything else you would like to add before the board goes into deliberation?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the board for board deliberation.
Just want to make sure, like, reading the planning board, the, we just dealt with number five, but 2A also suggests the proposed site plan submitted for the public record shall be updated to include the most recent version. Furthermore, these plans should be amended to include location assigns per the comments of the Town Engineering Memorandum. So we don't have the most recent plans.
No, they're, they're going to have to come back.
Fine, all right. So long, as long as they come back, I'm okay with it. Fine.
My questions on size and height have been answered. I'm all set.
All right, yeah, so, yeah, because I had, I had looked at that too myself, and I didn't like the fact that, you know, you, you have the sign for the car wash, almost 10 feet from the car wash, big sign, you know? The horses aren't, they're halo, right? They're not internally, okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it, I'm fine with it. In some ways, I'd rather see one, but, and, but, that's up to everybody else. But like I say, on condition number five, they actually did reduce the sign. We could take that out, but, and replace it with condition, we could do the condition that David wants, that the sign for the coffee shop or whatever it is there did not be internally lit, okay? Other than that, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm not too excited with two pylon signs. I guess I understand that their logic is, it's a strange location. I'm just thinking of all the different stations I see that are on two corners, and they don't, they don't use two pylon signs, but I'm still thinking a little bit here, so. That's my only thought. I, I just don't like the two signs, even though they're smaller than they were.
I, myself, I kind of agree with Peter. It would be pretty hard for anybody to drive by there, even without the pylon signs, and not recognize that there's a Mobil station or a gas station there. But they're allowed some stuff, and I'm going to bite my tongue. Gentlemen?
I do that a lot.
Are there any more comments?
No, I mean, how do we feel on it? Is we going to go with the two, or is that what we?
Well, I haven't heard a proposal from anybody.
No, no, I'm, I, I think I'm fine with it now that it's reduced in size. I mean, I just couldn't see the redundancy, and like I said, the Mobil sign there, I think now that it's back up the other end would give you the idea it's a gas station. So I guess it's up to the board, if, if somebody feels that they want to take down the one on, what do you call it, Commerce Way, whatever.
What if that was just smaller?
What would you take off it, though? I mean.
Take anything off, just make it smaller.
Yeah, this is a, a challenge.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, the fact that they reduced it already. Where it is placed on Commerce down there, Market Basket, I, I don't have a problem with it.
All right. Well, what do you think, Peter?
You're okay, it's just me, I can be the bad guy.
I await a motion.
All right, our motion, we approve.
But, like I say, um, on condition number five, they actually did reduce the sign. We could take that out, but, and replace it with condition... We could do the condition that David wants, that the, um, sign for the, um, uh, coffee shop or whatever it is there, that not be internally lit, okay? Um, other than that, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm not too excited with two pylon signs. I guess I understand that their logic is it's a strange location. I'm just thinking of all the different stations I see that are on two corners, and they don't, they don't use two pylon signs. But, uh, I'm still thinking a little bit here, so... That's my only thought. I, I just don't like the two signs, even though they're smaller than they were.
I, myself, I kind of agree with Peter. Um, it would be pretty hard for anybody to drive by there even without the pylon signs and not recognize that there's a mobile station or a gas station there. But they're allowed some stuff, and I'm going to bite my tongue. Gentlemen?
I do that a lot.
Are there any more comments?
No, I mean, how do we feel on it? Is we going to go with the two, or is that what we...
Well, I haven't heard a proposal from anybody from...
No, no, I'm, I, I think I'm fine with it now that it's reduced in size. I mean, I just couldn't see the redundancy, and, um, like I said, the mobile sign there, I think now that it's back up the other end would give you the idea it's a gas station. So, I guess it's up to the board if, if somebody feels that they want to take down the one on, uh, whatever you call it, Commerce Way, whatever.
What if that was just smaller?
Uh, what would you take off it, though? I mean...
Take anything off, just make it smaller.
Back up, yeah.
Yeah, this is a, a challenge.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, the fact that they reduced it already.
Yeah.
And where it is placed on Commerce down there, Market Basket, uh, I, I don't have a problem with it.
All right. Well, what do you think, Peter?
You're okay. It's just me. I give you the bad guy.
I await a motion.
All right, our motion, we approve case number 4189, modification to case number 3764, with, well, we can remove...
Yes.
Condition five and replace it with David's, so with five conditions.
Um, I want to re... Respond to Ed's. Ed, how did you want that condition to... What did you want?
So, I just want them to come back, approve it, but I want them to come back with the revised signage that shows they reduced enough.
Locations, yeah, an up-to-date signage point. Um, David, can you think of anything?
No, I mean, I'm not voting on this, but...
But your expertise is...
Yeah, the, the suggestion I'd have is, you know, to repeat no internally illuminated signs.
Okay.
Rather than just the specific sandwich shop one.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, that's clear in our bylaws, but it's just what the package we saw had one. We want to be clear, there are no internally illuminated signs.
But they can't approve those anyway, can you?
No, no.
Okay.
Not internally lit, no. All right, so, again, I would motion we, you, up to that point, so that we remove condition five, because they have reduced the pylon signs, replace it with David's condition that they, that the pantry sign or whatever is, is... Isn't going to be internally... Well, no internally lit signs. We don't have to single it out. And then that they come back in an informal and...
With up-to-date plans.
With up-to-days, right.
And, and I would say in that, and we have to have those informal plans before you can get a permit. Are there any other questions? I await... And Michael's made a, a motion. Is there a second? Ed seconded it? Okay, I have a motion to approve case 4189 with five conditions. A motion by, um, Michael and a second by Ed. All of those in favor? Opposed? It's a four-to-one vote. You go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Have a good day, Nick.
Okay. Moving right along. Uh, Brian Ellis, 4189, uh, 4190?
Yep.
Um, our next case will be case number 4190, Brian Ellis. 220, 233, 235 Sandwich Street, and that's JV's Corner. I will ask the clerk to read the advertisement into the record, please.
Case number 4190. "The Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall Town Hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. On Monday, October 20th, 2025 at 6:00 PM to hear the petition of Brian Ellis requesting a special permit required per section 2039(c) and section 205(4) to change a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use in the R-25 zone and per section 2037-j to waive required off-street parking spaces to convert a retail drugstore to a deli shop on the property of 2233, 235 Sandwich Street, shown as parcel 025000, 038A000 of the Assessor's Maps dated January 1, 2024, in an R-25 zone. The petitioner or his or her representative or any other person interested in desiring to be heard on this request should appear at the time and place designated."
Thank you, Mr. Leary.
Yes.
The other Irish guy.
The, the other Irish guy that doesn't play golf very well. Um, seated on this... Oh, well, hey, it's time for honesty. Seated on this will be Mr. Leary, this guy, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, and Mr. Connor, and myself. Who will be presenting?
My name's Brian Ellis. Um, shall I go ahead and speak now? Uh, thank you for taking the time to review my application this evening. Uh, two weeks ago, I met with the planning board to discuss my request for a change from one non-conforming use to another, as well as to waive the off-street parking requirements for the property. During that meeting, it was determined that only two, two parking spaces would be required on the current zoning, um, which is actually fewer than what was required from previous use. Uh, given the limited size of the building, the existing site constraints, and the fact that the available parking adequately supports the proposed use, uh, the planning board voted to move the matter forward, uh, to the ZBA with the recommendation to waive the parking requirement. Um, I'm here tonight to respectfully request the board's approval to allow the change in non-conforming use and to waive the off-street parking requirement. The proposed operation will be small-scale, locally-run, and designed to complement the neighborhood while maintaining the existing footprint and character of the property. Um, thank you for your time and consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from board members?
I have a question for Ed. Legal Ed. So, this is, it's one lot of land, two different businesses there, but how do we deal with the DPW comment that these spaces are on town property? Partially on town property. Six of the spaces.
So, the town has to grant these ones?
I, I thought that, I mean, it's been that way forever. I understand that, but...
Yeah.
Uh, when it, kind of when it comes before us, we're supposed to square things away.
Right, but, you know, I went out there and looked at, and that was going to be my... I was going to ask Jason at one point. I got a question for him right here on that. Because I looked at those spaces, you know? First of all, the town's got a sidewalk between the street and a one-foot berm on the other side of those spaces. My opinion is, you know, with the town, the town will never use that property because, let's face it, they widened that thing, I think it was about 10 years ago, and, or maybe a little better, but anyways. Um, and let's just say they decided to widen it. Well, it does, you just erase, well, they'd be ripping up the town, so you just erase the parking spaces. So, my question, I was going to ask Jason was, so, Jason, with, with them saying that, have you, you, you know what they are, those small six spaces, right?
Uh, I don't have, with a lot of computer issues, I haven't been able to get to the site plan.
I have a site plan here.
But, um, but I assume you're talking along Sandwich?
I can look at this one.
But... Because what I was just asking was, so if, if he removed the spaces, Jason, off the plan, but left the spaces, um, would that be sufficient?
So, I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat? Now that I have the site plan, I can, if you can kind of key me in, what are we talking about park, talking obviously about the parking spaces? But the spaces that are on the site are kind of, um, haphazardly, I guess you could say, because there's two entrance points that go into the, into the plaza, and both of them don't really orientate very well with the parking. So, uh, are you concerned about, one, a particular area?
No, but what we're concerned about is, in, in, um, DPW comment two was that they should remove the parking spaces on the plan to reflect that, um, you know, the town has that ownership, like their ownership goes a little bit over this side of that sidewalk.
Understood. So, um, it is, is common and traditional for most people to use a portion of the road easement to, along their frontage, to the point of pavement, as an example, for customarily normal things that are impermanent. So, in this case, traditionally, they've used that space just to park the front end of the cars, or the cars a little bit in that space. They haven't constructed anything. They don't propose to construct anything, so I don't think it's necessarily the right of the board to grant somebody permission to park in the road easement. But I, I don't see, um, the current conditions being any worse or made better by changing that. I, I think it's akin to somebody mowing their grass all the way out to the road easement. They're taking care of that as part of their parking lot.
So, with, with issuing of the building permit, the, uh, building, well, there isn't a bill, well, there will be a building, guys, a zoning permit. Um, would you wouldn't, but that condition that they would want to remove from the plan...
So, so I understand what Rick's saying is if they exercise their rights on the road easement, they would remove those parking spaces from being, being able to be, you know, fundamentally be used, because they obviously incorporate a portion of the road easement. But there's no plans. He hasn't indicated they have plans to widen that.
No, right, okay. Because that's what I was just concerned with. Because I went out there, and, I mean, well, first of all, I lived in that area. They, they've been used that way since the beginning of time, in the 50s. I mean, you know? So, um, I didn't have a problem, and plus, like I say, there's a one-foot curb and at the edge of those parking spaces before you even get to the sidewalk. So, I don't see it being a problem that way, but I just wanted to make sure that you could issue a building permit, you know, and a zoning permit with that.
Yeah, the existing conditions, uh, can remain, at least in my opinion, absent, again, the town exercising some right to do some work, utility or otherwise, in that area, which, as far as I know, they do not have planned.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I think it's a fair point to make, as you indicated, that the reconstruction, which was done not that long ago, actually placed a curving, redid their parking area, kind of delineating the sidewalk area, separating it from the parking area.
Yeah, I don't see that ever getting wider, because they do, you know, tractor trailers are going around it now. And the other thing is, is they got a transformer box there, a lot of lighting there, signage. I mean, the town has signage here too, so I, I don't ever see it moving now. So, just to, we're just trying to make sure that that number two is sufficient, that's all.
Oh, I, I didn't want to infer that I had an issue with it at all, really. I mean, I lived down there in the 70s. I've seen it. It's been that way forever, I agree. Uh, but I was just, I expected maybe Ed would have the response that he did, because something like that, if, if that was... Joe Smith's piece of property would say, hey, wait a minute, you can't use Joe Smith's property like that. So, that's, that's fine.
I have a variation of the same question, which is, um, if you... I wanted to see what the calculated requirement for parking within the site, so, so that those spaces did not necessarily have to meet the required for both the shop and this proposed shop. If they only need two, and the remaining spaces are, what, six or eight? Not, not counting the two, without going into the curb, uh, someday, if that ever happened, you know, we can see the, the count, uh, so we, we already have six and, you know, another six or so, so that means there's potentially 10 well within the, the space. So, uh, whether you erase the paint or not, the onsite parking meets the needs of both uses.
Right.
And, uh, so, uh, I'm fine with it. I probably go the, I live 100 yards away, and I, I probably go to that corner multiple times a week, so...
Sure.
Yeah.
Chain it.
Yeah, I actually go across the street, but anyway. But anyway, you know, I just wanted to clarify that the onsite, not counting the curb, would more than meet the needs of, of the uses there.
Naturally, changing the use, they're going back to Bob Eri's, that, that space back there?
Yeah.
Was a, um, deli originally, you know, so...
Cool.
It is going backwards.
Yeah, we've got that figured out.
Yes.
No, I, I also frequent, uh, that corner quite a bit, both sides of the street. Uh, and, um, at, where the corner store is, uh, the six spaces that'll be closer to the deli, I rarely see them used. Uh, so, yeah, maybe you got to take the, the paint off by the sidewalk, but I suspect people are still going to park there anyway.
Anybody else? Have you anything else you would like to add at this point? You, you've heard some of the questions from the boards that are concerned. Um, if not, I'm going to open this to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this petition? Are you sure? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for deliberation, unless you have anything else you would like to add.
Oh, I think that's, this is my first time doing this. I don't really know what else to include, you know?
Yeah. I will bring it back, just, this is for board deliberation. Ed?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Michael?
I'm fine with it.
Peter? Okay, let's go through the conditions real quick.
There's three conditions. Um, I'm fine with all the three. I could make a motion, or do you guys want to go through one right there?
If everybody's fine with the conditions?
Yeah.
All right, make the motion. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't have a computer in front of me, so I can't see some of this stuff. I have to try and do this, and, you know? And then, and then they keep changing pages.
Keep you on your toes.
I await a motion.
I motion, we approve case number 4190 with the three stated conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve case number 4190 with three conditions. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Go ahead and build your, your business.
Just have a question. So, what do I do from here? Can I start, like, um, like, are we good, or? I don't understand how.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now you're in trouble.
Ha ha, Jason. Our next case, case 4191, and I'm going to try this. Joseph... Januskiwitz?
Januskiwitz, that's close enough.
Please pronounce it.
Januskiwitz.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Yeah, I'm going to have the clerk read the ad first.
Okay.
Case number 4191. "The Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall Town Hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. On Monday, October 20th, 2025 at 6:00 PM to hear the petition of Joseph Januskiwitz, uh, requesting a special permit required per section 20512 in use table category D27 to allow a personal service establishment use in the Light Industrial District on the property of 22, 23 Aldrin Road, shown as parcel 101000, 037006 of the Assessor's Maps dated January 1, 2024, in an LI zone. The petitioner or his or her representative or any other person interested in desiring to be heard on this request should appear at the time and place designated."
Thank you. Seated on this will be Mr. Leary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, and Mr. Connor, and myself. And your name is?
Joseph.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Similar to him, this is my first time doing this, so just bear with us. This proposal is respectfully submitted on behalf of my wife, Aya here. Uh, she's a licensed massage therapist who seeks approval to operate a Thai massage parlor at 23 Aldrin Road, a former medical office located in Industrial Park in Plymouth. Um, the facility is equipped with five private massage rooms, two accessible single-stall restrooms, a welcoming lobby with a reception, and a private lounge area for client aftercare. It also includes a staff break room and a designated hand washing station to ensure proper hygiene and efficient operations. Um, we have a slide here, and if you want to, um, the pictures of the space, uh, scroll down a little bit, please. That's a picture of the entrance right there. Go back, please. Yeah, that's, uh, um, the reception area behind that desk there on the right. Um, that's one of the most... massage rooms right there, you can see, if you scroll down more, please. That's a massage room, we've already set up a massage room already, clearly, we're gonna get approval from the landlord to set up everything, so we're just trying to set up everything ahead of time before we open. Those are the grab bars for massage, what was I, sorry. The proposed business will operate as a professional Thai massage practice, offering massage services to the community. The practice will be low-impact use with a minimal noise, modest customer traffic, and by appointment scheduling. The location is within an established industrial park with a catering company, gym, and other service-oriented businesses. A Thai massage practice complements these existing businesses and does not create disruption to the neighborhood. The practice will provide health and wellness benefits to residents and visitors. It will also create a safe, professional, and welcoming environment that enhances the vitality of the area. We respectfully request that the Zoning Board of Appeals approve this application. The proposed Thai massage practice is an appropriate use of the space, benefits the community, and will be operated in compliance with all local regulations. Thank you.
I have a question.
Questions?
Yeah.
Peter?
What was in this building?
It was a former doctor's office, formerly.
Okay, I thought that's what you said. And did you say the number was 20?
20, 23 Aldrin Road.
20, then we have a problem here.
23 Aldrin Road.
23 is Viscarelli's building, right?
I believe so, I'm not sure.
Okay, so that's the building you're in?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so it's 23.
23 Aldrin Road, yes.
Okay, good, because you said 20, and it's published.
I said, I'm sorry, sir, I thought I said 23, I apologize.
Good, that's good, that makes it easy. That's all.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Have you been operating this business to date? Have you had any advertising, any operations of it?
No, we're waiting for you guys to approve everything, but we had, we had the key to the building, and we have access to set up everything, so just trying to set up everything ahead of time, because I assume it would be approved, I'm sorry for that.
You've got a good mind, I'm telling you, because you're already on that question.
Okay.
Job well done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's why I got mine to do last time. Go ahead. Okay, yeah, I have a couple different things. One is, I don't know, it gets up to the board whether they want to come back in an informal or whether we might have to continue it, but one is, it doesn't even show the spaces that you'd be using compared to what's gonna be used by other people in the building, that's one. Two, do you use any chemicals like hairdressers do? In other words, I don't, I don't know what a spa does, actually, but would you be using chemicals? Like, I know on a hairdresser, they have to have a tank because of the chemicals. Do you know, do you use those, or?
Just massage oil for massage.
And anything else, or, I mean, you know, when you say so, it's just, okay, all right. So, one of the things that was pointed out in the report was that, you know, one is the building, you don't show which you're occupying versus other tenants, so that, I don't know, it's up to you guys whether that's an informal or whether you think we need it ahead of time. The chemicals, if you're not using that, that's not a problem, and I'm willing to go with the other, this, put condition that they, well, let it go, they address the six engineering comments, they're not in the, in the conditions, but I think they should.
We went with, when we went with the planning board, they asked me, approved it, when we, we went with them two weeks ago, they unanimously approved it when we went with them, but.
Mm-hmm. They, they only, they make recommendations to us.
Yeah.
They carry the weight.
Yeah.
So, Mike, let me ask, Mike, you're concerned that the rooms he's gonna use aren't identified in there?
Yeah, in other words, on the main plan, the one thing that engineering wanted to see was they didn't identify the rooms. In other words, the plan that we have doesn't say where they're, they're down this end of the building, in other words, which ones are being occupied.
Their actual, their actual location.
Right, so in other words, you know, if you went out there for police, fire, something like that, it's not identified. That's the way I took it.
And the, do the Viscarellos, they have most of the building?
What's that?
The Viscarello family, they use most of the building, don't they?
Yes.
So, this is down the lower level?
The low level, yes.
So, when I drive in there, is it around the right side?
When you drive in, it's on the left-hand side.
Left-hand side.
It's on the very first floor, it's not on the second floor, so the low level.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Uh, no, right now.
Do you need a floor plan?
Yeah, I don't, we couldn't.
So, I'm just trying to find the conditions.
Now, there's no conditions on it, they have A and B.
I got it, the computer decided to work.
I have a floor plan, if you need a floor plan, I'm not sure if you guys need that at all.
Yeah, that was actually part of the packet, it just didn't show where it was in relation to the rest of the building, that's all.
In other words, basically, for the town, you have to identify what section of the building, so if they're there for a call or anything else, something happens, they know where you are in the building. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, you might have to come back, and it's just up to the board whether they want to do that informally, or what they, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, informal and also the other condition was on the, showing the parking spaces too, which I think we could probably do.
On the engineering report, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Have you anything else that you would like to add at this particular time?
Not at this time, thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm gonna open this to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this petition? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the board for deliberations. Mr. Sylvia, do you have anything you would like to add?
Yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen.
I'm all set. Pete?
All set.
I would say.
It's very similar to what they were doing before.
Yeah.
So, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
And I think it's, I think it's fine.
I would think that the layout could be done informally.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I mean, I guess they should know that, I understand that.
Okay, anything else?
No, I can make a motion, if you want.
I would like to make, somebody make a motion and also add that condition.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve case number 4191 with the condition that they satisfy the six engineering comments, and then they come back in an informal, and, well, actually, do we need that, because actually, that is one of the comments on the engineering report, is they show the location, so I think it's probably sufficient if we just say that they satisfy the six engineering comments.
Yeah, can't they just show that to Jason?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
So, they don't even, you don't even want them to come back?
Whatever you want, I don't know.
I don't think we need to.
I think we're fine just having Jason look at them.
Yeah.
Can you do that for us?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, we're not gonna come back?
David?
I can cross that out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
With the suggestion you add the standard liens language.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I don't know how that got missed, but so there will be.
So, will be two conditions, the standard.
Two conditions, however, and one of them will be the general condition about liens and taxes and all of that stuff, and the other one will be coordinated with what Mr. Leary asked for.
DPW conditions or something?
Yeah, one, a condition that they satisfy the six engineering comments.
Yeah.
One of those comments was they identify the location of the building.
Okay. Do you understand what we've asked for?
Uh, no, I'm sorry.
I kinda didn't think you did.
Yeah, this is my first time doing this, so.
You're not the only one.
Yeah, right.
Oh, dear. What the board would like you to do is have the blueprint drawn to show the location, the exact location in the building.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
As to where it is, and Jason will verify that, and also that all taxes, liens, and things like that are up to date and paid.
Okay.
And those are the two conditions on here.
Okay.
And, well.
Yeah, the six comments, but.
Six comments from engineering.
It's the same thing as what I said, you know, you're gonna, they have six, five things, and we added one, that's six things on there that they wanted.
Comments that they wanted.
Satisfied, and that will have to be done too. Jason will explain that to you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the board? I await a motion.
I do. You have a motion?
Oh, I do, yes. And the motion was by Michael?
Yeah.
And the second was by?
I'll second, if you want.
Peter? And, come back, I want to do six. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Leary, and a second by Mr. Connor, and to approve this case number 4191 with one condition that contains six items in it, all those in favor. It is unanimous. Go ahead and build your business.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
This concludes the business part of the zoning board meeting, and now we just have some clerical stuff to catch up on, and that shouldn't take but a couple of minutes, it's the minutes, and I don't know where they, are they in the package?
Yeah, they're down on the bottom.
All right, for the minutes for August the 4th, has everybody looked at them?
I have.
Yes.
I await a motion.
I motion that we accept the minutes of August 4th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Leary and Mr. Peck?
Yes.
To accept the minutes of, what is that, August?
August 4th.
August the 4th.
Right here.
All those in favor?
All right.
It is approved. Now, 132. I, has everybody looked at October the 6th?
Yes.
Any comments or changes? Seeing none or hearing none, I await a motion.
I motion we accept the minutes of October 6th.
Second.
All those in favor? It is unanimous.
I was absent, abstained.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, yes, and then we have to talk about a private?
Second.
Motion to adjourn and second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay, we gotta talk about.